All right, six o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Clerk may have a roll call and establish a little forum?
Sure, Cindy Whitey here, Mary Beth Shaw here, Barb Sacks here, Mike Wagner here, Matt Crowe here, Dylan Homanstein here, and I'm here as well.
All right, if you're supposed to please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Karen Dunn, Cindy, Mary Beth, Mike, Matt, Dylan, Angie, I vote yes as well. Moving into two point one, public input tonight, we have public input from Tasha Severson. You have two minutes if you'd like to stand and share with us concerns you're here.
Sure, I'm like actually having my heart break, feels like I'm gonna faint because I'm upset, but I myself feel that today is a sad day. I mean, everybody down here seems to be having fun and enjoying laughing and put with Kendra, Assistant Principal of the High School, Athletic Director resigning. I think it's a really bad day for the district. I'm not sure what the disconnect is between the board and the faculty here, but there's obviously something. I know each and every one of you are thinking, oh, well, you can sit down here too. And actually, I had my papers and I should have sent them in, but I am this close to leaving the district because of all of this. I have plenty of friends that are teachers, you know, all this. There's definitely a disconnect going on somewhere. We're not gonna keep losing all this administration if there wasn't. Before, and I don't even know why Kendra is resigning, but I'm not sure if you understand the coaches that get along with her, that are upset today, the students, the teachers, every, but there are only a few that don't like them, like people don't like a lot of people, right? But the majority of the people like Kendra. And now we're going into the middle of the school year, the middle of athletics. What's gonna happen? I have two hundred and forty-six employees in my business, or my family business, not sure you know that. I don't like every single one of them, I don't like what they do always at the site, I don't like what they do on offsite. But we make it work for the better of the business, and that's what I feel like you guys are not doing for the better of the school. And I don't even know why I'm here, other than to support Kendra, because I can see on your faces that none of you even care or respect that I'm up here talking. The disgust, maybe Dylan, I can see a little smile there, but everyone else, maybe even Mary Beth is wondering what's going on, but obviously, nobody has a back going to stand up to other people on the board.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and Bart, I can see it, the smart ass little look, but Mike, you don't even send your kid to school here anymore, which is a different topic.
Thank you, Tasha. All right, minutes in payroll, three point one. Do I have a motion to approve the Board of Education meeting minutes of December eleventh, twenty twenty-three?
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Karen Dunn, Cindy, Mary Beth, Mike, Matt, Dylan, Angie, I vote yes as well.
This is gonna be doing a lot more. Good luck with that.
Three point two, do I have a motion to approve the payroll and accruals slash disbursements listed below?
Salute.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Karen Dunn, Cindy, Mary Beth, Mike, Matt, Dylan, Angie, I vote yes as well. Moving on to reports, just wanna say that our day in the district is officially being rescheduled. Thank you, but no thanks to the weather for a date that we've had scheduled for months now. And you just said you saw sixteen inches somewhere. So we're trying to go, hopefully to just Plan B, and we don't need a C or a D at this point. So Plan B is rescheduling the day in the district to Wednesday, the tenth. We are moving it back and shifting a little bit for our candidates to arrive at eleven instead of ten, just to, you know, kind of plan for some mid-morning activities. But we feel like it's still crunched enough that we're gonna make this work, and we'll move into Plan C if we need to, but otherwise, we're moving things to the tenth, and we're still pleading for community and staff involvement. This is a collective effort, and we want feedback from all of our stakeholders. So please, again, everybody, hopefully the schedules are clearer if there's a snow day and include the weather, but again, we just, we welcome everybody and hope people can come. I also wanna make mention of the unfortunate incident that happened before school break. Just extending, and I know you're gonna go into a debrief a little bit on that, but just again, extending thanks and gratitude to our law enforcement officers for keeping us safe, and all of our district staff for keeping our kids safe. Safety is number one, and we were successful in that, so thanks to everyone out there for that. Also, before break, there wasn't mention of the Athletic Service Award that Kendra honored Brett with, and so I just wanted to make mention of that, because he sure is one of a kind, and we thank him for his service and contributions over the years as well. So that's that. We will shift then into admin reports, and we'll just go right based on what's on the agenda. So first up, from the business gurus, do you wanna share an update?
And we didn't have a financial report for you, because records on the bank in a day and a half was a little quick for us, but we had a few other things with the retro pay going on that kind of took precedence over bank reconciliation, so we'll get that to you in the next meeting. We worked on, kind of coordinated with Bev and Rachel on the retro pay, kind of getting everybody caught up through December thirty-first for how this worked, and that'll be a lump sum on January fifteen, and then kind of adjusting the contract for the remaining pays moving forward. So we have that ironed out, we sent, Bev sent an email to all staff, support staff, Sabrina, I believe?
Yeah.
Abby. And we'll kind of keep everybody in the loop on that. Other things we've been working on is kind of finalizing the twenty-two, twenty-three year finally, which has kind of been a long process, working on budgets, looking at year-to-days, projecting out, and then we're kind of gonna be getting, starting to work on referendum info and flyers, projections, all that, really finalizing that down and getting materials ready over the next couple of weeks, months, and have that all ready for pre-adjation.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Great, so next, Dale, can I know?
At the elementary level, here in January, we had a look to our mid-year assessments. So talked about a little bit in the board report, had a meeting with my sixth team today after school, just kind of setting the stage and planning. So far, we're right on track with our goals and the activities, the sessions that we had scheduled for first semester, we hit all our marks. Now it's getting those assessments done and seeing where the kids land, and then making adjustments from there. So it's a busy time for us on that piece, just getting the schedules and the technology part of it, which we had a little staggered this morning, but overall, we hope that will work. Any questions from you?
Great.
Thank you.
Dale. All right, see you next up, Liz.
We received the October AZT plus writing results right before we went to break, so we will be distributing those to all juniors here shortly. We're looking at between, like, in each of the subcategories, about twenty point five is the average in each subcategory, and they thought of thirty-six, so they're right on track to bump here, hopefully in March. And then we did on the twenty-first, Kendra and I hosted a little hot chocolate and cookie. Soiree, I don't know.
Morning snack.
Snack, morning snack for all students, grade six through twelve. So we had tables set up at both entrances, kids were able to grab hot chocolate and cookies as they came in the door for the last day of school, and of course, they did several rounds, so but we successfully dispersed a lot of cookies and a bit of hot chocolate on that day, so that was well received by both staff and by students. And we started testing today with iReady, so we will see how they're doing mid-year, but and we also met with SLT, our shared leadership team, the team in the middle school, high school, and we're gonna be collaborating with our special ed staff to have them step up and share some of their expertise with us in the next three weeks, so we're very excited to have that happen. So it's busy already, it's January, so we'll move.
And I know the joy and excitement kind of got squashed the day before break a little bit at the end of the day, but primarily, I heard the feedback was awesome from, yeah, everybody, staff, students, that what a joyous occasion to kind of have a little celebration before break, so yeah, thank you guys, to your efforts, because it looked and felt like the holiday spirit, and so, yeah, it's something to celebrate. All right, Kendra?
So the play, which was early December, it seems like a lifetime ago at this point, after the holidays and everything, was a success, and so just lots of really great reviews from people who came and watched it, lots of great reviews from the kids who participated in it, so they got a really good time with that, and they're already into musical, they had auditions last week and are starting with practices, and we're in the midst of hiring a choreographer to have that be a new position, which is cool, so it'll really help us kind of bring that up to the next level. So they're ready to go with James and the Giant Peach, so getting ready for that come March. Student Councils did a penny drive over the holiday, that week before the holidays, and raised over four hundred dollars. So that was fun, and got some neat feedback from the community too, of people saying like, I remember doing penny wars and it hasn't happened in a long time, so that's something the kids wanted to do, and so we helped them with that. Middle School Student Council students are, wanted to have a dance, they felt like that was something that was important to them, so Middle School Student Council is putting on a winter dance, January twenty-sixth, and they're really getting excited about all of that. High School Student Council is going to help host state convention, so the student leaders in there are learning how do you put on a state convention, where do you go with that? And so it's not hosted here, it's hosted in Madison, but we are the ones that are like the hostesses of that. So, yeah, so they're getting with that, and Sturbe's helping them kind of learn the ropes of what that looks like. And then sports by basketball is running on all cylinders, the middle school started last week. We have grade six, seven, and eight with our middle school basketball. And then high school basketball is in full swing in the conference games. We've added some JV two opportunities for our girls' basketball, so like right now, they're playing sock, and then when we go back, or when we host Monroe, we're gonna do that as a JV two instead of a JV. It'll help them out, help some bar girls out too. And then boys continues to go, we're already in the works, like we're scheduling the game for tomorrow, and then there's also a game on Friday too, so tis the season of snow, especially basketball. So, yeah, it's been, it's been good, and then in my report, I included kind of where our numbers are for different things. Basketball numbers are down across the state, it's been a large conversation about, it's a four-month season, so many kids are playing club ball, and club ball just looks and feels so different than high school ball. And more and more students, who are those on-the-edge students, are choosing to do different sports or different activities in the winter, than deciding to join the grind of four months of basketball. So it's come up a couple of times at our district AD meetings, and then it also was a large topic at our state convention of just, you know, does basketball start to look different in the next couple of years? Because like, you know, what do the kids want, what are, like, do winter sports start to look different? So, so you'll notice that in the numbers, but that is, that's a trend statewide, and we also have great new opportunities like wrestling, three of five kids joining that this year, so different opportunities and then a shift in what we're talking about.
Great, thank you. So I'd say it's a plus to hoarding vintage items like penny jars when low kids mine. Wow, it's a possibility, right? Awesome, all right, Kelly?
Two things for special education I wanted to stand on. One was available, we've talked a little bit about that mid-year testing for special education, there are a lot of mid-year adjustments, it's a great time to think about what students need, what we have seen work, and what we need to shift. So especially at that middle school, high school level, when we hit the semester, we change around our EA schedules, special education teacher's schedules, and our students' schedules. So there's a lot of work that is getting done there, which we're very grateful for that continued problem solving. And with that mid-year piece, we're also hitting the timeline, we're starting to plan ahead for caseloads for next year. And since special education caseloads have kind of come up a couple of times, I wanted to just highlight that we use the weighted caseload model, or we're trying to do some more of that, where we're not just looking at the number of students that are assigned to each special education teacher, we're truly looking at the needs for the student instructionally, and then also the demands for our special education staff, whether they're supervising several EAs, zero EAs, working with lots of related service providers, multiple grade levels. All of those things are factors that we kind of will look at as we start to plan for caseloads for the upcoming year. For student services, I will kind of highlight, I know what others have highlighted, but our student services team, we're very grateful to them for their ability to respond to students in need or to high-stress situations, so they've been a lot of help in our debriefs, and a lot of help in just making sure the mental health of our students and staff as well are supported. Those things are really important across the board, so we're very grateful to them, because they bring an incredible amount of knowledge for situations like we experience. Any questions?
Great.
As Bart stated, the superintendent search or the interviews are bumped off for a day because of the weather. I didn't hear sixteen inches, but I did see it on Greg and I sat on a Zoom meeting with the National Service Forecast this morning, or actually this afternoon, and they're looking at anywhere from eight to twelve inches here, south of ninety-four, south and west of ninety-four, and that's us. And of course, depending if it goes north, we'll get, if it goes south, we'll get a little less if it goes north. There was a sixteen on the map. They didn't say that, they didn't use that, but there were several numbers above twelve. They did say that it's possible that certain areas could get over twelve inches of snow. So at the end of the day, you're gonna wake up in the morning, we are, obviously, we have canceled school, everybody in the area did, you're gonna wake up to one to three inches of snow, probably wonder why did we cancel school? And then it's gonna snow throughout the day heavy at times, and it's gonna get very, very windy, and it's gonna do very, very heavy snow. And then the warning ends at three o'clock in the morning on Wednesday, depending on how all that goes. There's a huge difference between eight inches and twelve, and twelve inches and, you know, sixteen inches. So then you gotta, you know, worry about the cleanup, I did contact a bus company, they indicated they could do a late start, not to say we are. Typically, if, it just depends on so many things, because by three o'clock in the morning, depending on the crews and how many hours that they put on the road, it'll depend on how many, whether, when they can get back into service as it relates to cleaning up, so. I'm hoping that we have school Wednesday business as usual. The solar project, you know, as I stated last month, it's going well. Actually, I think I had mentioned how nice it was to have the warm weather, which was very helpful, but at times, you know, they look forward to cold weather as it relates to some testing of some some of the instruments and whatnot, but depending on what kind of snow we get today, and again, they started the project not knowing when it wouldn't be complete. I can tell you right now, we are certainly ahead of schedule, but now it depends on how much snow gets dumped down this, of course, the next couple of months. And of course, the December twenty-first incident was the Thursday that school let out very unfortunate situation that I thought the school district, under the circumstances, did a very good job. We had a debriefing with the Dane County Police Department, the Tuesday coming back after break to include administration and a number of people from Dane County. First and foremost, Officer Jody had made it real clear, it worked, the bad guys got apprehended, and everybody was safe. Now, that said, we've learned a lot through all that, and I've been through a number of these, and when I say a number, they're all very, very, very different. But you quickly know, and one of the first things we say, or you hear in training, you can't train for what you don't know, and those, you know, do we necessarily train at three-thirty when the kids are, elementary kids are on the bus? Typically, we're training during the school day. But approximately three-thirty, kids were on the bus, there was a stop in front of the school, and there was some questioning, well, why was the stop made in front of the school? It was not intended to stop in front of the school, it was intended to stop in between here and and cross planes, the car didn't stop, and then it stopped, slowed down a few times, the car decided to stop in front of school. Officer Gonzalez got out, there was a mishap, the driver took off. Officer Gonzalez unfortunately busted his arm in a couple of places, and had some ligament damage to his arm. He went down, ambulance came, Officer Hartman was second on scene. The car turns into our high school, which we don't know why. It's speculation, they thought it was a road that would go through, because turned around to go back out, and that's when Officer Hartman made a decision.
Cartman.
Cartman, excuse me, James Cartman made a decision, thank you, made a decision to, quite frankly, ram into the car to prevent it from going elsewhere. Two suspects jumped out of the car, ran across our school property, and of course, the rest, you know, one held up in a silo, and one in the marsh. We are under lockdown for approximately an hour. Liz made communication through the public service address, the PA, to communicate. Now granted, communication always can improve. At the end of the day, we didn't know what was going on for a while, we didn't know if the suspects were armed. Officer Cartman did pull his weapon immediately, you know, you saw what I saw, he was, which is very typical, you are suspended with pay through all kind of investigation, that never happened. They quickly found, you know, the information, the facts, they used our school, some of our school footage to find out exactly what did happen, and, you know, thanks to James for thinking very quickly. And it was about an hour that, until the two were apprehended, there were a number of police officers in the area. As you're well aware, there were dogs, there were drones in terms of locating the suspects, and they were apprehended, you know, without any, without any harm done to anyone. We did then release, Dale made a quick decision, a very good decision, as the buses literally were starting to, they were packed with the students, and this just happened, you know, go, just, let's get these buses out of here right now. Bev had mentioned that one of the drivers, and we are going to follow up with the bus company, made a comment to the students, get down, you know, don't be peering through the windows, we're getting out of here. Anything I'm missing, Dale and Liz?
I will actually have something to add to the whole busing situation. So obviously, this all, most of this went down at my property. The one thing that I, you know, would like to relate to the bus company, and, you know, everything was handled great, and I appreciate everybody's work. My, and this is coming from a parent, because it was my child, Cody actually got dropped off right by the motel, which probably shouldn't have been the greatest decision to be made. Granted, there were, you know, five squad cars that were blocking the road, that probably wasn't the greatest option, so I'm just, just as an FYI, you know, obviously, I was there, you know, the police officers were there, but, you know, maybe just something to think about, you know, in the future, that, you know, if there's an area where we have kids that are needing to be dropped, or this kind of situation, it probably is one of those things where the parent should be contacted to pick up at an alternate location. So, you know, just an FYI to, for the school, for the bus company, I mean, everything was fine, I was right there, but, you know, just, just a little FYI.
We had talked about a reunification site for that situation. Perhaps those buses should go somewhere and stay there with the kids on the bus.
Yeah.
Because that was a great example, but that could have happened other places as well. What's interesting, our reunification site for an active shooter, if we're run fight, is
Yep.
Is, help me out.
Wolf, the Wolf property.
Right, so it's right where all of this stuff happens, so.
Yep, exactly, it's a little different situation.
It's a good example of, we trained and we planned, we didn't plan for this scenario, and there are many, many other scenarios that you can't plan for, because some of the stuff you can't make up. At the end of the day, it was nice to hear Dane County say a number of times how well they thought the school district did in terms of handling the situation. You know, there's some things that we know we can work on, you know, we had a lot of rubber neckers, if I may, out here, and of course, the police were doing what they were supposed to. And we had a number of, I would suspect, some parents, maybe people just driving down the road just wanted to see what happened, but they shouldn't be here, I mean, they should just be off school property, but. I was not here, I left, I was in my driveway in central Wisconsin, and Bev called and said, Craig, we've got a problem out here, and she explained what was going on. I got in my car, talked with Bev, talked with Bart. On the way back, I got back just when we were letting the high school out, and then the administrators, we debriefed and sent out communications from my office, yeah.
So I just wanted to mention, I'm gonna forget last name, AJ in Asher's mom, put a long thing on Facebook, and just many, many accolades about how well things are running, she, of course, was very concerned about the routine for kids, but she just had nothing but good things to say about it, so well done.
Yeah, I think at the end of the day, the parents that I talked to, they were, you know, of course, there's always a state of panic every time you have something, it's always gonna be there, you know, whether it's your own kids or somebody else's kids, but I mean, all the parents I talked to, you know, they felt, you know, they felt confident that, you know, the school in Dane County did everything, you know, necessary, and, you know, the kids were safe, and so, yeah, so it's, you know, and like Craig said, I mean, communication can always be better, right? Like, it's, you can always improve on things, but, you know, I think things went, I think things went very well, so.
You never wish anyone to go through it, but you're certainly better equipped for the next time, I think, as well.
Yeah, exactly.
I had the chance to talk to a lot of parents that night, I was kind of going around town, just checking in on folks. I also saw a bunch of teachers, and they all wanted to say the same thing about how much they appreciated, especially Liz, your communication, as soon as you were able to. A lot of people made it a point to say thank you, so I hope that you've been able to hear that, because that put a lot of minds at ease, I think, and then also Dale, your actions, I think a lot of people were very thankful for your good thinking, so just across the board, a lot of thanks for putting safety first. I have a couple of questions about the crisis plan then, will we be seeing some sort of report of changes that we're gonna be making in the future about it?
Yeah, it's just, I don't mean, this was a nervous chuckle.
Right.
There's just a number of issues related to safety in general. Greg and I, Greg was the safety coordinator for a decade in total, and when I'm going through our materials, there's certainly some updating that we can do, and, you know, it's like policy, you know, you don't deal with policy until you have to pull it out and say, oh, let's take a look at some of this stuff. Yes, and so that's something that we hope to have put together, at least in terms of some ideas and recommendations, so the next person, you know, doesn't have to, you know, start from, not that they have to start from scratch, but yeah, we will be continuing, but Greg and I had a meeting just this morning on that particular issue.
Great. Selfishly, just one thing, I found myself getting a lot of questions during it, and I was like, we'll wait for communication from the school district administration, don't go to the board members. But knowing that people do come to the board members for information while it's happening, I know that my email wasn't on like the list that got, because I'm not a parent, right? So it did take a little bit for my account to get information, but that's just a selfish little thing as a board member, so.
Well, those are the things we learn.
Right, yeah.
During the heat of the moment, as school people were running around, just trying to make sure. just trying to make sure that everything's in line. You know, we know that we had some students that may have been in a specific safe space for longer than we would certainly have liked to. But there was a period of time that went by, we just didn't know.
Absolutely.
Didn't know what to say because we didn't have information. We didn't know exactly what was happening. You know, when it first happens, you know, you fear the worst that you have an intruder. And for a while there, especially when we just got done, well, within the last couple of months, our safety drills, our intruder drill, now kids are thinking, oh my God, it's happening. We have an intruder.
Right.
Because you typically don't have this happening to extend the school day. So they're thinking something is up in this one. But you know, we, at the end of the day, it's unfortunate that, it's all unfortunate, but to end the first part of our school year right before the holiday break without the ability to, you know, have students the next day and talk with them. We did have a number of parents pop in the next day with the kids. I mean, not a lot, but in terms of, you know, just wanting to talk to somebody.
And I would just like to say, one of the first things I did, you know, after reviewing this information was to actually call my former district and talk to them about exactly what happened here in that transition time. And I know Liz, I don't know if you're at Sparta at the time, in the morning when they had that issue over there.
Yup.
And that was the transition time. And those are very, very difficult. I think there was a school shooting in Iowa a week ago that was at that transition time. But you know, the best words I heard was, is the police saying, it's the best possible outcome you could have is what happened here. So it's going to be chaos. None of us can predict how these things unfold, you know? So we just want the best possible outcome.
And I think cell phones change the landscape when you know, have your student body in the high school. We could have them.
And so much information. Most of the information that was coming in wasn't accurate.
Right.
You know, you just get a lot of garbage against them.
I can just give you an anecdotal. My daughter was playing volleyball on the Dells and she calls me up and says, Dad, don't worry, we're not on the bus. And I go, what are you talking about? The bus is on fire. And I was the business manager and I had no idea what's going on. And then it's a phone call, so. Yeah, you can't beat the phone. It's really impossible.
Any other questions, discussion? Do you have anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Okay, all right, moving on to district business. We don't have anything on the agenda as far as our mini discussions tonight. So we'll roll right into six point one in review of our school perceptions data. That's what this works.
This was, I'm going to move this so I can look at it. This has been a challenge. I'm taking this information and trying to create some semblance for it. You'll recall when you interviewed me back in June, I believe, that you were interested in getting information related to school culture and climate. You then hired HYA who, and I had mentioned that school perceptions, you know, is probably, you know, a very notable company that does this type of work. And I've worked with them in the past. It actually done some work here a while back. And then Mike Ritchie from HYA wanted to survey as well as related to getting information for the superintendent search, the profile. And we were concerned about survey fatigue, so we thought, why don't we combine these? And we did so. This information we've had for a little bit of time. First of all, this is just a real high level overview. There's a lot of data and it'll all be on the website. And we'll get, I'm not sure how much of it's attached here tonight, but we are going to go at a high level and go over the, I would say would be the summary. Knowing that all of it will be assessable and there's just a lot there. Now, the frustration that Mark and I had over literally the last couple of weeks is trying to, there was just a couple of mistakes in terms of the information that we got just in terms of how it was formatted and it was frustrating. So we literally just finally finalized this this afternoon. Anything to add to that, Mark?
Summed up great.
Okay, so if we take a look at, this is the parent survey and this is just a summary and there's a lot of numbers here, we're just going to focus on the agreed percentage. That's the percent that our, our own parents. Do we have the information, how many took it up there? We've got to make sure we get that out. We had a fair amount of staff and parents take the survey. We'll make sure we have that data. But the first is the percentage in terms of our staff that agree. And this is again, the top five. Clean and safe facilities, I think we'd all agree on that. Clean and well kept, excuse me. The average in the middle, just to explain, it's, we're not going to focus on those. That's the score of one to five that people would have used. That data becomes more significant through time. You don't have to, a couple, two, three, four years taking the survey. And the percentile is ranked with other schools that take the survey. Again, until you have a number of years, that isn't a real significance. I feel welcome in my child's school. You can see the percentage of ninety-four. My child feels safe at school, ninety-four. Overall, my child was able to handle the emotional challenge of school, ninety-two. And the teachers, the school teachers with materials that reflect my family's culture and racial backgrounds. The school teachers, excuse me, ninety-one. Those were the top five in all of the questions that we asked. And then the next would be bottom five. The district is heading in the right direction. What's interesting, it says eighty-three percent. I'll take eighty-three percent of everything. That's a pretty high number, but according to what's lower on our survey, these are those issues. A healthy, a healthy culture at our school at eighty. Overall, the rate of communication from school, seventy-five. I feel comfortable contacting the assistant principal, AB, when I have an idea, seventy-four. I am satisfied with school efforts to address bullying, seventy. Again, for as percentages, you know, they're, they're, they're good percentages, but those reflect the lower percentages as it relates to my questions. This is interesting. On a scale of one to ten, how would you, how likely would it be to recommend our school to a friend or a family member? You know, I just, you know, you can look at that as a visual. If you start at neutral and go up, you combine those, I think it's closer to eighty-seven percent. You know, what, you know, this is data. It's one snapshot on one particular day when somebody takes this. And so I probably should have prefaced by that. But if you look at this, I would say well over eighty percent of our families would recommend this, you know, to somebody else. And if you take a look at, eliminate the neutral and if you look below, you know, it's eleven percent.
This is the parent.
Correct.
Two hundred and fifty-one.
This is the parent, yeah. And actually, for a small district, that's quite a few.
And were they allowed to put, was there a space on the survey to put comments? Like the bottom people, the top people, were they able to put comments?
Yeah, so attached will be a comment analysis where they sum up.
There's, I want to say three, four pages. And there's summaries of themes, if I may. It might not be word for word.
And that's really to protect the confidentiality and to put things in different phrasing.
Okay, next, I believe, is staff.
And there were eighty-five respondents.
And how many staff members we have?
Hundred and thirty.
Hundred and thirty, so that's relatively high percentage. Of course, staff does a good job educating students. Ninety-nine. I have a healthy working relationship with my coworkers, ninety-five. I'm proud of our school, ninety-two. I feel safe at work, ninety-two. And our parents have community support at the school district, ninety. Bottom five. The amount of work I am asked to do is reasonable, manageable, fifty-nine percent. You know, I can say post at ten, that certainly has influenced that. The social, emotional needs of all students are being met. That one's, that one we certainly would like to see higher. Our school discipline practices and policies are effective, thirty-eight. Our staff handles student discipline in consistent manner, thirty-seven. And the district pay practices are fair, thirty-two. The pay practices at thirty-two, I mean, that's really low. Of course, everybody would like to make more money. I think that's a general statement. But keep in mind, a couple, I don't know, was it a year ago when we changed our insurance to a high deductible? Two years ago? I don't know if the perception of that has something to do with that.
Is that a verbatim response that they were asked to, again?
But that's, that's very low. And of course, you know, we did address that, at least in terms of the conversation and a pay increase this year for support staff and then next year beyond CPI negotiations. But again, this is every money of the district. How likely are you to recommend the district as a place of employment? Again, if you take the neutral away and you go up. Seventy percentish. You know, we certainly would like to see that higher. Any questions on these?
So for example, in the prior one, Bev, percentile, what type of schools would we be being compared to?
State of Wisconsin, those that would have taken this. The question I don't have yet is that, are they ranking every, likely? Like some schools have, you know, maybe they've been doing this ten years in a row. Is that calculated ten times or is that just one school district? My guess is calculated ten times. So hundreds, hundreds.
And the other part is it's like, it's not representative of a rural school or a small school district or representative of our geography and state. You know, so it's really against every, every school that they survey.
Again, it's one, it's one survey over one year and over time. I don't get too worked up, worked up other than, okay, let's take a look at this. What's, what does it mean, you know? We need to look at it, but it's, are we consistently seeing the same numbers? Whether they're high or low over the course of, you know, a couple, two, three, four years.
Is there additional in the last few questions? Sorry?
We will, we will have all of the questions available. We will have the entire survey where you can see each one of the questions available. And then there's just spreadsheets and data that, if you're interested, it's just, there's so much there. And then the students, I'm sorry.
We had a hundred.
The most important.
Hundred and forty respondents.
That was just, that was just secondary students. I have a friend to sit with at lunch or hang out with, ninety-eight. That's important. I try my best at school, ninety-five, it's important. I can go online to use a device at school when I need it. I have friends who help me when I need help. And teachers treat me with respect, at ninety-three. Bottom five, I can relate, I can relate to what I'm learning at school, sixty-four. If I were bullied, I'd feel comfortable talking to someone about it, sixty-three. I feel safe answering questions in class even when I'm not sure I have the right answer, sixty. When I talk to people outside of school about what I'm learning, forty-eight. I guess that doesn't surprise me. Most kids at school follow the rules, forty-seven. And that's coming from a sixteen-year-old, so. This, you know, you also got to take a look at, again, this is one snapshot. But it's what we have in front of us. Most days I like school. Again, keeping neutral out, that's fifty percent. You certainly like to see, and we want kids to enjoy coming to school. But quite frankly, you know, for a lot of kids, school just not happening, it's not a good place. And so that's, you know, something we constantly have to take a look at and, and address. You know, we've all, we've all seen surveys as it relates to student size, it relates to A to E issues, you know, drugs and alcohol and unfortunately, you know, causing harm to one or two, to themselves and yada, yada, and sexual activity. And we look at that and we're always like, oh my God, really? Is that where we're at? We want to discredit it like, no, we don't have, we don't have that high a percentage of students sexually active. Well, it's the data we have in front of them, you know? Do some kids embellish and maybe not be real honest with some of this stuff? Yeah, sure. That's why you do it over time. You know, oftentimes you can do a specific class that might not be as motivated to be, you know, as honest as they can or just want to, you know, mess with the system, if I may. But this is the first survey. I've used this in the past. And I'll be frank, the first time I did this, I was a high school principal and I kind of jokingly, but as I always said, there's a little truth in everything you say. After I got beat up on it, last time we do this. But you know, over time, it's just one piece of information, so. Any questions on this?
I mean, I have comments and I think that this is a really good example of why this hopefully is going to be an annual thing. And I think we've discussed as a board, we want an annual survey of all these different groups. Because I think personally, in my opinion, you're seeing that as a board, you know, we're really tuned in to what the community thinks a lot of the time and of what parents will think. And you have some pretty high marks from parents and community members. But then when we get to the other folks that we are here to make sure we're a good employer for and a good educator for, there are some spots that we struggle. And so I'm happy that we're doing this. I'm happy we're able to see this data. And I think that it is the first year, like you said, Craig. But the reason hopefully it gets better over the years is that we're going to work on the spots that this says we need to work on. And I'm sure, Bart, you'll have stuff to say on that. The first page, Bev, if you could go to that one. I just want to throw a little bit of water on one of these nice numbers. The last question there, the school teachers with materials that reflect my family's cultural and racial backgrounds looks uncomfortably like the number. And I could be wrong of, you know, majority of white. looks uncomfortably like the number, um, and I could be wrong, of, you know, majority white percentage of students that we have and parents that we have in the community. Um, and so when we talk about making sure everybody does feel welcome at the school, um, and hopefully in the next surveys, we could, you know, try to get a question that can, can get more to the point of it. Um, just because I think that, that looks really nice, but that might be because we're serving one, um, group of folks. And we do know that, you know, socially and economically disadvantaged families in the community and students are some of our toughest test score areas. And so I think that's another nugget of information for us to go forward with, so.
Do you have an idea explicitly in how to reach?
No, I just know I don't like, you know, and not don't like.
We help focus groups.
Right.
You can identify who the nine percent are.
Well, I don't, you know, I'm just throwing cold water on it because it is nice that ninety-one percent of people in the community think it's true. But when, when, um, our SES population and the school is the one we struggle when it comes to test scores, then, then maybe there's something there, is what I'm saying, you know?
Yeah, I don't disagree, and I think you're definitely on to something, it's just that's the hard reality. It's like, how do you pull information if you don't get the information? When, you know, and how do you know who it is? How do you?
Did they collect demographic information as a tool for this?
Uh, no, it was just, are you a parent? Are you a, you know, so.
It's difficult to hold demographics because, you know, racially, we're, you know, we're Caucasian, we're, we're, we're a very white community. And you can actually identify students if you start doing that. Because, you know, you know racially, we're, we have a very low, you know, minority population. And if you look at this, it's in ninety-one percent, it's the other way.
And again, I'm not trying to blame, you know, I don't think anybody's at fault here, just, you know, it's in our top five, but asterisk, you know, I think we're all aware of that, so.
Was there another? We had another.
I think maybe my first comment was to some of the lower staff responses about how, um, sometimes it's hard for us to know what it's like to teach here. I mean, we're not teachers on the sport, and so, um, yes, it's good for us to have that view. Some of us worked in a school before, but I personally not, so.
Well, and I, I think that speaks to the intention of like, it's really, it's really hard sometimes to be committal about things like this because you have to have action, you have to do things, especially to stay consistent. Um, that this is something that we have to be consistent about the next five years. So maintain averages, succeed, implement change, to measure and assess. And, um, so it is a project in and of itself that we have to be committed to prioritizing. And we do, we want all the stakeholders' feedback. And so the challenge has been historically about, yes, what, what we are assuming or what we think are small populations of people representing, but not really as, as a whole. Um, and so, yeah, just what, what Craig was saying is that if we, if we really prioritize this and over the next few years, um, do it annually and then measure and assess, um, that's where you can find growth and progress.
It's really the hard conversation.
And I think, um, I think it helps identify areas of, okay, well, the pay and practices, right? That's severely low, so obviously we need to open the conversation, what do you mean? So I think this is, this is the healthy part, is it, it identifies patterns and it identifies themes to just open the door and avenue for more conversation and details and, um, a group effort, collective process to hone in on some of these things. And it's, it's a lot of work, too. So I, the easier route is to kind of hide by success and kind of ignore certain things. But this is, um, something we're committed to and we're going to have to work at it and, um.
So how will this be shared, like, does it go to the leadership group? Is there something that they can kind of look at and say, you know, this might be things we, we want to work on?
Well.
Not the admin, but the, the teacher group.
Everything's going to be public.
Okay.
So I think it's at, um, the administrative level to kind of determine how things are communicated with staff and, and what arises out of that, um, to ensure future conversations. I don't know if you have anything.
We had, um, I've been telling the administrators, we'll begin this information up to them probably for the last month or so. I haven't done that yet, and, uh, we will release it all tomorrow. I wanted to get through this, this meeting first.
And, and I think.
And then administratively, you know, we'll, we'll look at this and, you know, study it. And again, it's, it's one piece of information that we'll, we'll look at and, uh, it will become more meaningful over time.
Yeah, I'd be really interested, I know it's another bunch of work for our great administrators, but if, what threads there are between our first round of superintendent survey we did last spring to then this, and then, um, we just did another bit of daddy cap, did you?
Preface staff.
So the H Y A report that was more focus group centered.
Yeah.
And then this data, and then we also had last spring, the superintendent survey happened. And whatever threads you can see between all of that.
Community survey last spring?
I think so.
Well, and, and that one was dialed down a little bit because we were through a different consultant.
Was that, can you explain?
Yeah, so it's slightly different, probably, you know, there might be some themes there, um, to group up with. But certainly, I think, um, and this can segue into somewhat of our next conversation eventually of, you know, you identify bigger themes, um, and that's kind of what, what guides your strategic line here.
Yeah.
Um, and so of notice, obviously, in the H Y A, um, I don't know if you've looked at it, but that's where they gave specific comments. So they made public the specific comments. Here we'll do a common analysis, but again, it's like picking themes, parallels, um, and that's certainly something that can be done. It's a lot of work, they were separated, but, um. So any other questions specifically on this? We will roll into our district ed, district business, seven point one, admin restructure.
You have a new soup on that will be hired. Hopefully, we'll know more on Wednesday because I think that has a whole lot to do with the number of other positions as it relates to the business office, uh, and relates to C N I, Dale's, uh, um, I don't want to say old position, but the position he held prior to taking over the elementary school. And then, uh, there's been conversation regarding what the athletic director slash assistant principal looks like. Um, from what I understand, this has been a, 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 well, it's, it has been a revolving door. It's a very difficult position. You know, there's a percentage that come to play on each position. But at the end of the day, um, first and foremost, we have to be worried about student behavior. And that's all day long. Um, things come and go in and out of the office, left and right. Um, and so the A D stuff tends to get put on the, I don't, I'm not speaking for, for anybody here. You've got to deal with certain, certain things first, there's not enough time in the day. And there has been a number of, of people in the position, which isn't necessarily unusual because it can be used as a stepping stone. But I'm here to recommend we split the positions into an activities director and a dean of students. The activities director, um, is more encompassing than just athletics. Um, typically, schools have gone towards an activity director from the old, from the athletic director, probably over time. Um, and it's, and it's more encompassing in terms of, uh, you know, all the activities within the school district. Uh, we also, in our survey, again, somewhere in there, um, point about that, you know, we focus on athletics. And what about everything else we do? What about, what about, what about the arts? What about choir? What about, what about band? And the, and the list goes on. So as a part of restructuring, um, I would suggest, uh, that you consider those two positions, we would create job descriptions and, and bring those forward, um, soon. So you can look at those and then, um, open up positions and see what that looks like. At which time you can then approve. Any questions?
I think especially post-COVID, I think we saw a lot of changes with schooling. And so to revisit our structure, like you're saying, is a good step forward for us while we can, so.
And I think, um, the activities director, like you mentioned, um, positions us differently now that we're one site. We've talked about different, um, opportunities that we can do as a one-site campus and, um, highlighting the social and emotional kind of aspects of, um, the education we offer. And so this, um, this individual that takes on the activities director, um, I think it's, it's an exciting proposition for us. Like you said, um, we've had some pushback that highly focused on athletics and what about everything else? And so I think that's, that's an exciting opportunity. And, yeah, clearly, um, student behavior and discipline was at the forefront. Um, and we need somebody that can tackle that head on. And, um, we're all about ensuring operationally that we can do what's best for kids and staff. And it's no fair and a disservice to anybody to have a position that's not sustainable and isn't, um, doing what's best for kids and ensuring their needs are met, so.
Behavior issues post-COVID is not just an issue in Wisconsin, it's, it just, it.
When we were talking about.
It's, it's, it changed when we came back.
The survey, and we even asked, um, Bill Foster from School Perceptions about questions that we could ask even students themselves that would hone in on that because we were seeing an increase. And he said, that is the number one thing right now of all school districts utilizing their services right now. So we're not alone, but, um, also we're trying to be proactive in, in doing what's best and what we think can help.
And Craig, so the current position focuses on secondary education, middle school, high school. These two new positions would do the same, focus on middle school, high school? Or is that something we'll develop further down?
I, well, that's a good question. Um, that's a very good question, I think. You know, activities are, um, I, I think should be looked at district-wide. The, the other position, we just, uh, right now, the, the issue of, of behavior that, that, uh, Kim's position deals exclusively is with, is with secondary. And I know it's busy, so, um, not that we don't have needs in the elementary school, too. But, um, that's a good question. Again, we'll develop, uh, job descriptions and we'll take that into consideration. I got to think through that one. Is, um, you'll be.
It just shows your thinker.
It's okay, you know.
But we also talked about it, it's like a wider, um, issue when you talk about, um, school psych and, and the other departmental needs with people's services and who we have, um, in different places. People's of the grant up and.
We've got a grant that's, that's, that's due, uh, that's due in the elementary school. That's, that's half-time, um, uh, social worker. And we've had internal discussions on, you know, opening that up and what that's going to look like in one position. And quite frankly, it's, it almost comes down to a skill set. I know Dale's really pushing to increase our school psych time. But let's, let's be fair, um, there's many districts in the state right now have open school psych positions. They can't, we can't fill them. C S A five, um, you know, they specialize in, in Derek, hiring people that have a level of expertise to assist small school districts. They do the same thing with school psychologists, where they'll hire a school psychologist to help out smaller school districts, but maybe multiple, maybe it's just in the area of overseeing the I E P process, for example, or testing. It just really depends, quite frankly, on, on, uh, the pool of applicants and what we want that person to do. And there's some things that, uh, the open position with Liz Primo as the social worker in the elementary school, you know, what that's going to look like. We have, we put in the budget half-time, um, that might be position, uh, that might come across the table as, no, we want this full-time. But part of it is the pool. You, you may not, you may have somebody that only wants that part-time job. Or, or they won't take it unless it's full-time. So I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, play our hand there until we, you know, see who's out there. There's just an extreme shortage of people in, in the area of student services.
We will roll into personnel, eight point one. Do I have a motion to approve the hire of Jackie Bacon as an educational assistant, Spackett, in the elementary?
So, who, so.
Any discussion? Welcome, Jackie. All right, Karen Dunn, Cindy.
Yes.
Mary Beth.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Do I have a motion to combine nine point one and nine point three? Thank you. I was going to acknowledge all of them. Do I have a motion to approve a donation from Plastic Ingenuity to the Vanguard Racing Team for three thousand five hundred dollars? Thanks again, we heard a little bit about this, um, a few weeks ago. Really excited to see what our Vanguard Racing Team comes up with.
No.
Model size.
An eye on the whole size car.
Model size.
Sorry.
Thank you, Sunday.
All right, Karen Dunn, Cindy.
Yes.
Mary Beth.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Matt.
Yes.
Dylan.
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Nine point two, we have acknowledgement of a donation from the Knights of Columbus for three hundred sixty-seven dollars and twenty-one cents to the spec ed department. And their twenty-twenty-three Tootsie Roll drive. That's awesome. Thank you to them. And we're also acknowledging a donation from People's Community Bank for two hundred and fifty dollars from the Vanguard debit card promotion, which is also exciting.
Yeah. Is that from like all the numbers of them or how?
How percentage?
Wow, it's amazing.
Good marketing and spending and donation, awesome. Okay, future meeting dates are up there. Um, also making note that there will be a quorum effective for our, um, state convention this year, which is awesome. It's our highest attendance yet, so. Thank you also to the people that have to work and save lives that can't attend. We will come back with. So then we will roll into adjournments to executive session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes nineteen point eight five, here in one, here in C. Considering employment, promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, after the executive session is completed, the board will reconvene to public session.
Cindy Bydian here. Mary Beth Shaw. Barbara Stotts here. Mike Wagner.
Here.
Matt Crow.
Here.
Dylan Hommstein.
Here.
I'm here as well.